I now call this meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624 to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Arcan.
Here.
Beloit.
Here.
Daniels here. Ellison.
Here.
Scar.
Here.
All right, if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please take off your hat if you have one. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have before us an agenda. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Ellis, does she have a second?
Second.
Ellison, excuse me. Ms. Beloit, so we have a second. Is there any discussion? This will be a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, save sign. Motion carries. We also have before us a consent agenda. The consent agenda is designed to expedite the handling of routine miscellaneous official business of the school board. This includes donations. We are truly grateful of the support shown every month to our, to the, every month to the staff and the students. We want to make sure we thank those who have given their time and their money to the school district. Could I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Beloit, a second?
Second.
Ms. Daniels, any discussion? All right, this will be a roll call vote. I'll ask the, I'll ask the secretary to call the roll.
Arcan.
Here. I mean, I got that. Aye.
Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels, aye. Ellison, aye. Scar.
Aye.
All right, and now we have, we have accepted that. We're going to move on to the public forum B1. This is a time for the public to, to portion a meeting. They were, want to request to speak. The public forum allows three minutes per speaker with the understanding that our speaker this evening will communicate through, will communicate to the board. When the three minutes, you have three minutes, we will get cards. So when thirty, one minute remaining, you'll get the orange card. And then when there's 30 seconds, you'll get the yellow card. At the end of three minutes, I will gavel and you will be done. So we also want to remind you that when you come up, you can take one of the two seats right up here in front. We want to also remind you that while speaking, we have to, we will maintain the school district policy on data privacy laws, precluding personnel and student matters or data being discussed publicly.
Okay. Thank you Chair Arcan, members of the board. Tonight we celebrate students who have represented the district in cheerleading, Alpine ski, gymnastics, and wrestling. Congratulations, students, and thank you to the staff and family members who supported the students along the way. Go Bears!
Congratulations to all the members there. We know that a lot of time and effort went in for them to get to those honors. So moving on, I would like to move on to informational item C2, Superintendent's Report with Dr. Kazmicek.
All right, thank you Chair Arcan, members of the board. So a brief update tonight. First of all, the summertime community services catalog will arrive in community members' mailboxes in mid-March. Catalog highlights opportunities available to residents of all ages as the weather turns warmer. The publication also includes Bear's Bulletin, which covers a variety of district-related news and information. While the weather has made a turn for the better in recent weeks, we want to make sure our community members know the high school fieldhouse walking track remains open from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Monday to Thursday through the end of May. There is no cost, but we do ask those who participate to wear clean, dry shoes. And as I end my update this evening, I'd like to wish our students, families, and staff a great spring break next week. Hope everyone finds time to relax and recharge as we gear up for the final third of the school year. Came fast.
Yeah? I don't think I'll be using the walking track anytime soon, sorry. All right. The next item we have is informational item C3, Mr. Shavers, American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution of Concurrents or Non-Concurrents.
Good evening Chair Arcan and members of the board. Every year around this time, so March, March 1st is the deadline that our American Indian Education Program has to, our parent committee, has to identify if we are going to be concurrent or not for the school year. Just a little closer. So as, so every year that vote takes place in February during their monthly meeting. This year, for the first time since I've been with the district here, for the past two years, we've been non-concurrent. This year, their vote was successfully concurrent for all six goal areas that were present, which was exciting for our department as well as for our district. So Ms. Danielle DeLong, which is the chair, was unable to do, come this evening due to scheduling conflicts, but I just wanted to share that with you so that you had that information. Any questions?
Any questions from anyone? Yes, Ms. Ellison.
Just a comment to say thank you to Mr. Shavers and members of the APAC and families for, for working through the non-concurrents from last year and getting to the point where there's a concurrent vote this year. I know that that takes a lot of time and effort, and so I'm grateful to everybody who was involved with that. So, thank you.
I would like to, I know Vincent Patton is here as well. He is our American Indian Ed Coordinator. I know I worked a lot with him this summer to go through the reasons for the non-concurrent last year and provide the opportunities for our district staff to get involved in additional training, which was one of their requests.
Mr. Scar.
Yeah, what, the difference between concurrents and non-concurrent, non-concurrents, what's the significance there that now that we're on concurrent?
A, well, a non-concurrents vote, which we had the previous two years, we actually have a, we have to put a plan together in place on how we're going to address the areas that they felt we were deficient in, and then move towards correcting that.
Okay, I see.
So the concurrent vote means we do not have to submit that plan.
Great, thank you. How many American Indian students do we have in the district?
Vincent, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but 25 at the high school level, 20 at the middle school, and 30 approximately at the elementary. So, and that's an interesting one. That's one that changes year to year as well. We really are encouraging, and Vincent's doing a really good job with that as well, encouraging families to identify or register as American Indian through a 516 form, so they are identifying that way in documentation so that additional funding can come in as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to go on to our discussion items. We'd like to go to discussion item D1, Elementary Specialists. Dr. Gillespie and Ms. Babish.
Good evening Chair Arcan, members of the board. Dr. Kazmicek, tonight, me and Ms. Babish are here to talk to you about our elementary specialist program, update you on where we've been, and then we have a recommendation that will ask for action later on in tonight's meeting. So I wanted to take you on a little timeline of where we've been the past few years. We actually came to the board at the end of the '22-'23 school year and shared some results from a CARRY review. The Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement did a, helped us with a review around our specialist program. We really wanted to make sure we got staff input, family input around what were strengths for us, but also what were opportunities in terms of that programming. Then in '23-'24, based on the results of the CARRY review, we implemented elementary art. We had done things in the past with our partnership with the center, help me. Wayberth Center for the. I think you, I was going to get stuck. And we implemented some sort of art experience in every one of our elementary schools, and that ranged from full year of art as part of the specialist rotation to art experiences. And a lot of that had to do with, you know, what we were able to do in terms of our world language program, which is what I'm going to talk about a little while later. We had some challenges in filling some last minute, last minute openings with world language, and so some of our schools have had art full-time for the past couple of years. We also started that year, '23-'24, orchestra moved to starting in sixth grade, if you remember those conversations. This year, our current reality is still that each one of our elementary schools has some sort of art experience, but it's not consistent in terms of some having a year-long, others are having even residents come in. Willow Lane, Vadness Heights, and Otter Lake are elementary schools that do not have elementary world language. The other ones do currently. We also, if you recall, at the end of the '23 school year, we talked a little bit about elementary media and how to continue to build up that program. And so we did this year hire an additional elementary media specialist. There was funding allocated for that from the state. And so we have a one-to-three ratio. So we have one media specialist per every three elementary schools, but they also have media clerks as part of that elementary media team. So when I came to present to you at the end of the, in May of '23, I talked about three action steps that we would have as an organization, and I want to give you an update of where we were there. We talked about art already, that we talked, that we would start that in '23-'24. Art has received overwhelming support from, and praise from students, staff, families. It's been really wonderful to see, and it's something that people talk about often as a positive that we added to our programs. In addition to the staffing that I just talked about for elementary media specialists, that team of specialists and clerks supports student learning by offering a lot of different things, leading book clubs, teaching digital safety, providing training for staff and students. We're also making a concerted effort to include more STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math in our elementary schools, and that's done through our media program. So it's been really exciting to see things, robotic stations for K-5 students, and that's really continuing to grow. Additionally, in May, we talked about that we were going to examine our world language models and including language immersion, which as you know, we will be starting to, at two schools, kindergarten and elementary Spanish dual immersion in the fall at Matoska International and Otter Lake. These are some recent pictures of the work. We are definitely leaning in recruiting students, supporting families in enrollment, and then our staff is working really hard on the curriculum for our kindergarteners next year. So I wanted to review just briefly what the CARRY survey said because we, we use that to guide decisions throughout the past few years. Strengths from that survey were that there's a high level of student engagement in our classes, in our specialist classes, and then really families very much appreciate the specialist offerings that we had. Areas for improvement are things that we really leaned into was there was an absolute overwhelming desire to add art into our programming. A need to organize our specialist schedules across buildings. It can be really complex as you look at people who travel between buildings. Our elementary principals work really hard around making sure that we meet the needs of our students, but it also is a schedule that's manageable for our staff, and we continue to look at that each year. And then really, most staff and families echo that they want our students to have even more movement throughout the day. So we've added things like more flex time at each one of our elementary schools, really looking at how we're creating movement in other areas, but knowing that PE is valued extensively by our community. Another thing that we asked was what is best practice in specialist scheduling? When I reached out to our neighboring districts at the time, we were the first to embark on this for quite some time. And so how to really, the complexities around this, how to make sure we're making the best decisions? And really, what came out overwhelmingly from research was that we really listened to student and family input in terms of the types of offerings, but also know that we have state statute and standards that we need to implement into our elementary programming. Our survey, we did an online survey. We received really great response that was representative of all our schools, all our grade levels. 873 is a large response in terms of, as CARRY was looking at, is this something that we can really lean into and be confident that it represents voices across our district? We also were very happy that it was representative in terms of racial and ethnic identity in students and families who qualify for support in terms of special education. So again, 84% agreed, 84% of parents agreed that their child enjoys going to specialists. They really wanted a variety of opportunities for their students, and families were satisfied with the schedule and rotation. Areas for us were adding art, increasing movement, increasing communication between specialist teachers and families, which we really talk about across the board, and then increasing inclusion for students in special education. This is, if you remember, the, we asked families beyond required music and physical education, which areas of content would you like? And art, physical education, STEAM, music, but art came out really as something that people wanted, and it was number one in terms of the area to add into our specialist rotation. So our recommendation moving forward will be, and as I worked with the team, and I'd like to thank our elementary principals, it's been really complex to really dive into this, was I needed us to have consistent offering of art at each elementary school. I understand why we started with some inconsistencies, but it seems like, based on the response from our survey and the experience that our students are having, that we need to make sure that there's consistency across our schools, and that we utilize the CARRY survey in terms of highlighting and really amplifying family and staff voice in our programming decision. So the recommendation that I'll be asking for action on later on today is that beginning in the '25-'26 school year, we'll have physical education, music, and art at each one of our elementary schools. Then at Matoska International and Otter Lake, the schools that we're adding immersion to, that they will have physical education, music, and a rotation between art and Spanish. The why behind that is art was identified, as I've already mentioned, as a top choice of our families. We really looked at, could, is it feasible to offer a four-rotation, meaning having world language, art, PE, and music at each one of our schools? And it isn't in terms of our current budgetary parameters. That would add at least additional five FTEs, which is not what our budget can have right now. And we also would be concerned about the decrease in physical education because you add, you know, it's like, you add one more day into the rotation, that, that limits the physical movement for students, and that would be contrary to what our families have asked for. We still obviously are really committed to world language as we are adding a Spanish immersion program, and we remain dedicated to our world language education in middle and high school. And then Spanish being an integral part of the programming at Matoska and Otter Lake, we talked a lot about, one, what does that look like for a consistent unifying experience for all students at that, those schools, even families who maybe don't choose immersion? And providing a second language experience is also a key requirement for IB, International Baccalaureate, which is another program that we have at Matoska. So it seemed like having those two schools set up similarly, and then the rest of our seven elementaries with PE, music, and art is, made the most sense for us as we really looked at feasibility in terms of financial and then the feedback from our families. What questions, what questions may you have for me and/or Jen?
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Mr. Scar.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Is world language, is that a state mandate?
It's not in terms of elementary, and it really isn't across the board. What it is, is it's often a requirement for students when they're applying for four-year colleges, and so we offer those experiences for sure in the middle school and high school, but it's not a state required.
So when you're talking about world language, you're just talking about we offer students different, you know, different ways to learn different languages, French, German, Spanish. Is there any other ones besides those three?
Yeah, we have American Sign Language, French, and Spanish as the three that we offer, and they're elective choices for students, so they can choose in eighth grade if they want to take that, otherwise they choose anywhere but from nine through 12.
Do we think that having the, having this world language priority helps the K through five and reading in general to get our reading scores up, or there's not much of a connection?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I would have to talk with, it's perhaps prior when we were able to have a more consistent programming, but it has been difficult to maintain the staffing in terms of when we have last-minute openings, world language is a hard one to find.
Thank you. Thanks.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. We'll see you back when we bring it back to a vote on it. All right, we're going on to discussion item D2. This will be the first reading of school board policies 420, 427, 508, 533, 701, 704, 721. Normally, we look at these together, so if you have a question on one, if you can let us know the page number that you have the question on. Just so you know that these policies will be brought back on April 14th for us to make a vote to approve of, approve this. So do we have any questions on those policies? Mr. Scar.
I had one on the, it was a federal grant one, and I'm sorry I can't get the page because it had to do with cybersecurity. Do you guys know where that page, what that page number is? I just had it. But anyways, when I read the cybersecurity part, I thought, well, this is really more like a date of privacy rather than cybersecurity, so I would ask staff to go back and look at that and, you know, reconcile it. Oh. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't have my mic on. Still learning in this, in our new digs here. But anyways, it didn't seem like it was a cybersecurity requirement, or a cybersecurity policy. It was more like data privacy, so I would go back and maybe kind of take a look at that to get it focused more on cybersecurity, which is protecting our systems from, you know, people that want to do our systems harm, steal our money, steal our information, things like that. So.
It's policy, it's policy 721.
721, right.
Starting page 88 of the board packet.
Right, 721-8. I just found it, right. I would just recommend going back and looking at that, squaring it up with, with cybersecurity policies or protocols, those types of things, as opposed to just data privacy.
I'm looking for the, yeah, but I'm looking for the.
There you go.
So follow-up, Chair. So follow-up on that, so that, that section then, that's, that's highlighted. I'm looking at page 96 in the board packet, section C. My guess is that that comes from changes in statute.
Statute or MSBA recommended change, yep. Yeah, but we can look at that.
We do. Any other questions?
Let me just add, do we have a cybersecurity policy here?
We do, yeah, we do.
Okay.
By policy, you mean insurance policy? Or do you mean policy policy?
No, policy policy. We can talk, we can talk about that.
Okay, and then, and once again, if there's any other further questions? This will come back on April 14th, and so we can look at that and then have that ready to go.
Thank you.
When we vote on it. That brings us to operational item E1, action on a bid for Central Middle School Security Package. Mr. Wald.
Good evening Chair Arcan, members of the board. Dr. Kazmicek, tonight I have the phase two of the, phase two bid package for Central Middle School Security Upgrade. Phase one was completed in 2022 by Allstate Communications, and at that point, we knew we would have additional renovations and new space brought online, renovated spaces, and that we would do a phase two. This is a pretty small percentage of the security package at Central Middle School. It's the final package. We had a bid opening on February 25th. We had two bidders for the project. One was ECSI, they were the high bid, and Allstate Communications, who did the first phase of the project, was the low bid. The recommendation is to accept the overall bid for the Central Middle School Security Package as presented in the amount of $323,700 to Allstate Communications Incorporated.
So the recommended action in front of us is to accept the overall bid for Central Middle School Security Package as presented in the amount of $323,700 to Allstate Communication Incorporated. Do I have a motion to accept the bid?
So moved.
Ms. Ellison, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Do we have any discussion?
I have some questions.
Mr. Scar.
Couple of questions. This was not included in the construction budget with Kraus and, something separate?
No, this is included in the construction budget.
Oh, it is?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just we, we installed some of it early on, and then the parts that needed to wait, we waited until, you know, it happened this summer when we're doing the final phase of renovation.
Did we have someone do a risk assessment of the security at, prior? So that, that fed into the bid process?
Yeah, that's a good question. We had, we had True North work with us on evaluating our buildings, and then they put together our security recommendations, and that's, those are implemented across our buildings. So what we're going to install at Central is consistent with what we've done at all of our other buildings.
Do we use, just, I was just thinking about this. Do we use like the law enforcement to review the plan, or not necessary?
Not to review the plan. We work with what the standards for school security and meet or exceed those standards. And then our police department has worked with us on our sites, walking through the sites and evaluating. So they have a plan on if we're called into this site.
Okay.
Where, you know, what things do we need to know? We have Knox boxes on the outside of our buildings, so the police have security to all of our sites.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, we have a motion in front of us to accept the overall bid for Central Middle School for $323,700 to Allstate Communications. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Arcan.
Aye.
Beloit.
Aye.
Daniels, aye. Ellison.
Aye.
Scar.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on operating item is E2, action on the elementary specialist. Welcome back, Dr. Gillespie.
Chair Arcan, members of the board. Earlier this evening, I presented a recommendation on our elementary specialist program, so the recommendation would be that you approve the recommendation as presented.
Okay, so we have a recommended action. Do we have a motion?
So.
Ms. Ellison, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Scar. Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Daniels?
I just want to say I have people, little people in the district that are going to be very excited about this. They're very much art families and something that they, I know that they've really enjoyed the units they've had so far and want more of it, so, and their school didn't, didn't have, you know, art before, so I'm really excited about it for families.
Other questions?
The one thing that goes off in my mind is, as we continue to talk about student engagement, and there's nothing, I, when you go into that art class, you can see a lot of student engagement, a lot of the times that the kids use their creativity to create and dream, and I think that's something that helps in all the classes that they do, that they learn to start even the problem solver doing that, so I feel it's important. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, this will be a voice vote, so all in favor have recommended approving the elementary specialist program adjustments as presented. the elementary specialist program adjustments as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And then, on operation item E3, we're bringing back the action on school board policies 505, 599, 610, 999 for approval. We usually do those again, so, can we get a motion to approve these?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Daniels, a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. Discussion. Hearing none. This again will be a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are now on to our board forum. This is a time for board members to share anything that's going on and that they've been involved with at the community. Anybody want to share anything for board forum? What's that?
I said not today.
I do want to share one thing is, as we're sitting in this room, I have to thank the members of our community. Through their agreeing for this construction, we're able to create this board room, and we're hoping that it's a more friendly place where people can come in and, and come to the board meeting. This could not have been done without the members of our community. So, on behalf of everyone, I want to thank everybody who supported this and, and got that in there and so that we have this to share with the community. The only other thing I want to say is, I just am very, feeling very blessed with all the support as I have, if you haven't noticed, if you see me try to walk, I had my third ankle surgery, and I got a lot of support and a lot of people, you know, volunteering to push me or push me off my scooter, I'm not sure. But, yeah, it's just nice that people care. And that's, I, I'm very thankful as, and this is why I have lived in White Bear my life, and this is why I stay in White Bear, because this is a great place to live and get educated, work and play. So, thank you for that. Anybody else? With that, we are ready for, I can go to the adjournment.